Good evening and welcome to the Selectman's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine, for the December 4th, 2018. Tonight, we are acknowledging the passing of President George H.W. Bush. We're gonna have the salute to the flag, and immediately followed, we're gonna do a moment of silence.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I make a -- sorry. I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Well, second that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Great. Minutes of the last meeting, approval of the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Well, second that.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Department Heads Committee Chair Updates. Dave Langley.
Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to give you guys an update on where we were at when I was in as the Intern Road Commissioner on District Two. Spoke with Joe Letourneau quite a few times with everything, brought him up to speed on what we're doing. Old business, the Hop Road, we had four hazardous trees that were removed in the last week. They've been cut down and removed. We had two stumps that were ground that were right on the edge of the road, so for traffic hazard and snowplow and hazard. So, that's all set and taken care of on that path there. New Bridge Road, same thing. One of the meetings, I approached you guys to get some funds appropriated, so we could take care of some hazardous trees. That's been taken care of, same thing, that's been all ground and taken care of with that there. So, our overhead tree work on those two areas are in taking care of. On that, the -- I brought it to the Board's attention a few weeks ago, the roof on the garage, the blue garage that the town owns, as we all know, between the weather and everything that we were handed in the last few weeks, I still haven't gotten hold of anybody, but I'll pass it along to Joe, and hopefully we can get going. I think we were talking about maybe a CIP program for those buildings there, following, you know, next year's budget and everything there, so takes care of that. The other thing that we have, I've talked to Joe about, is on the county road, right at the Milton Mills Road, we have a couple culverts that are plugged. I do have, I have been in contact a couple times with Jeff Ness from Ness and Sons out of Arundel, which they do have a sewer rotting truck, which they can come up. When it's nice and Kennybunk, we're plowing snow, so I brought Joe up to date on that there. That's probably gonna be the best avenue to do. Hot Top plants are closed. I mean, if worst case, you could dig it, it'd have to be left there for the winter months, but hopefully we can rod that and open that cupboard up and get us through for the winter time there. So, that takes care of my old business on that. New business, it was when I, we were hoping we weren't gonna have to plow, but we ended up plowing three times in the month of November. It was on East Shore Drive, right after Peter H. Smith's house, that's where the road stops down over the hot top, at the end of the hot top. For years, there was always a turnaround there, but in the last few years, they built a house in that turnaround. So, what I was doing, when I went in with my big truck, I'd plow in as far as I dared to go, and then I'd back into Heathbrook Drive. I did get a verbal from Peter L. Smith, the turnaround at Heathbrook Drive. We were safe, it's good road and everything there. So, talking with Joe Letourneau, same thing, where do we turn around? Where is he gonna be turning around? So, the Board's gonna have to do some work with Joe and find an area to turn around. I think probably the best thing would be on Heathbrook Drive. I'm not sure, I know Heathbrook Drive is in an association, I'm not sure if the dirt section on East Shore Drive has an association, you know, to, you know, at a 401, treasurer and so on and so forth, so have to do some research on that there, so to take care of that there, everything. Just to clarify, back when we realized we were gonna be plowing some snow here, I did reach out to Jennifer and said, hey, what can we do for the Lebanon Road? The only reason why I did that is I was limited with trucks. When the Board approached me and said, hey, can you help us out till we figure out what we're gonna do? I said, yeah, we'll help you out. My business, once again, farmers set up to plow private camp roads. I've got one wing truck, I've got a one-ton with a sander, and Robin Heem helped us out with his pickup. The reason why I reached out is it's roughly six miles round trip to go over there to plow a half mile of road. That's why I reached out to, you know, the Jennifer at the Selectman's end of it in Shapley to see, could Hunt to help us out, not to cause any bunch of questions or whatever. I was looking at the well-being, being limited with trucks, what I needed to do. You gotta understand, we were plowing 50 miles of lane road.
Yeah, I don't think, David, I don't think anybody's questioned that.
Okay. No, I just wanna verify that.
Road commissioners before, and the Board actually discussed it last week, even with the current, they wanted us to reach out to Sanford, so that's a con, that has come up several times, but you absolutely did nothing wrong, and the Board appreciates your efforts.
Okay, no, but like I said, I just wanted to clarify, that was the reason why, knowing, you know, it's a long stretch from here to the Lebanon Line, and what we needed to do. So, and like I said, who'd ever think we were gonna plow three times and do what we did? And that's in our time, my time, with Scott's time, again, the Scott Mooney, Scott helped us out. He took care of the Sanborn Road from 109 to the Shed, because it's just out of our way. We were concentrating so bad on the Milton Mills Road and Fox's Ridge, that's the main artery in the South Acton, that there was a lot of traffic. In Andy, with the school, on the phones with him in the morning, you know, we didn't wanna use any more snow days, we did, but the hazards that we had and what we were dealt with, and that's where we went with things there. So, hope we helped you guys out. Glad Joe set up, he's got two wing trucks, he's got two one-tons and everything and stuff there, but who, you know, it's been, it was the mid-'70s, we look back in the records, it was the mid-'70s we started plowing snow this early, and they're still having it on the ground, so.
Wow.
So, but that was it. Like I said, Joe's, Joe set up, Joe was hoping to be here, but he was working out of town today, so, and everything, so, any questions?
No, but thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for stepping up.
Thank you very much for everything you did. It was stepping up and doing it, it was, I don't know what we would've done, so, we really do appreciate it, so.
Acton is mine.
Thank you so much.
Any other department heads or committee chairs?
Hi, Lois Smith, you're the Chair of the Cemetery Committee. I had a couple of questions. One was, can we access a key to get in during, not just during hours?
Lois, you just asked me the other day for a key, and I told you I would get you one.
No, but I know.
So, you need to give me, so you can give me 24, 48 hours to get you a key. I told you I would get you one.
The other thing is, is what do you guys decide as far as percentage of budgets? Can we, what is the limit, and what are we looking for?
We haven't put anything on that yet.
Because we only have, we only have three more meetings before that has to be decided, and I just didn't know. We've actually changed our meeting from the end of the last Thursday to the following, to the following Thursday, which is the 20th, so that's only gonna give us two more meetings after that, and I just wanna make sure if there's a percentage like we did last year, or if it's just put in what we think we should have. This is something that I was.
Yeah, so the timeline went out, as you guys approved it, but there was no memo, nothing tied to it, so do you wanna sit down and talk with the Treasurer, and then we can, if we decide to put a memo out, you can do that next week?
Yeah, 'cause unfortunately, it's sooner than later, and some of us that only meet once.
They'll have a decision before your next cemetery meeting.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other department heads, committee chairs?
Question, when I watched the Selectman's Meeting last week, you had the 27th meeting on there, and you made reference to the meeting, the special town meeting you had on the 26th, but that wasn't available yet. Is there a procedure for the sequence of when things get posted onto the?
The agreement that the Board has with the APAC Director is that it's three business days, so if it's not on there yet, it should be.
Okay, 'cause the 27th was on there, but the 26th wasn't?
The 27th, I believe that there may be, may be some uploading that happens right after the Selectman's Meeting, and we may have employees that are doing the filming, may upload it before they actually leave, depending on who filmed it, but it should be on there, I'll make a note to check.
Okay.
But it's generally three days is the turnaround.
Yeah, it would just seem like they would be in sequence with the dates.
It would seem, but it doesn't always happen that way.
The other thing is, I'm, from the Road Committee, I'd like to extend our appreciation to Dave Langley and his crew for the work that he did on the roads, and how much we appreciate it, and getting a town through a tough time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in Department Heads Committee Chairs? Nope, seeing none, we'll move on. Old business, ACO position?
So, the town has received two applications, have two completed resumes that, looking for direction from you guys. If you wanna sit down and have some interviews, or I can sit down with them both first, then bring them to you, but we'd like to get somebody appointed sooner than later.
Sure. Do we need to go over them, or leave it up to Jen to look at them, or narrow them down and bring one to us, or?
You received two?
I received two.
Good. You know both individuals, or?
Yes.
You do, okay. So, probably oughta have one of us sit in on it, anyway.
Absolutely.
Either one of you two available at any time?
Kim's gonna be a conflict, so it needs to be one of the two of you.
Okay.
I'm available, I mean, how soon?
I'd like to meet with them this week, if possible.
Okay, tomorrow at 2:00?
Let me see if I can get ahold of them.
It'll be good. Nice to have two. Okay, the next item, the D6 dozer. Oh, yeah, I have an update on that.
That's you.
I did talk to the, Mr. Ridley from the fair, and they, he was quite receptive of the idea of having it on display down there. It would, he's gonna bring it up to their board meeting and get back to me on it, but it'd be something that we'd have to decide if we wanna do, and if we're gonna do it, we need to put something, we need to have it covered. Some sort of a roof structure over it, nothing elaborate, but just like a capote-style roof with removable side panels, would be my guess, sitting on a concrete slab. So, we can work on getting some, I can work on getting some numbers together on that, and he, I passed that on to him, he thought that would be a good idea, he actually brought up the idea of having a roof over it. Put it in the vicinity of the museum building that they have down there, and where it's a piece of equipment that was used in Acton and belongs to the town, it would be a good addition. He did say that they have an agreement that they put out and have signed usually by someone that does put something on display down there, where the ownership stays with the owner, which would be, in this case, the Town of Acton, but it would be kind of a permanent display, and if something was to happen to the fair and it went defunct, it would revert back to us. So, we would still own the piece of equipment, but it's on a, it's on a display down there. So.
We'll see what he says.
Yeah, see what their, see what their board says. I wanna try to get some pictures of it and, you know, see what it looks like, and get it out, you know, see what happens. So, that's where we're sitting with the dozer. Okay, security on the San Salt Building?
Per the Board's request, I did order the signs, the authorized personnel-only signs, so they should be coming in shortly.
Lebanon Road, Acton side.
If it's okay, we can combine these next two items together. Based on the last meeting, I did have a conversation with Mr. Winchell, and two things he asked me to make very clear, he does not have a heat gauge or any other equipment from the Town of Acton, and he was not receptive to continuing to be discussed or put on the agenda if these items come up. He says he's turned everything over, and I'm adding the word in politely, he would like you to contact him directly, he says he doesn't have anything he's done, and he doesn't wanna be asked again.
Okay.
In regards to Lebanon Road, he said that he does plow the Sanford side, and we're just gonna say no, he's not interested in doing anything with that. So, he says he doesn't have anything else, short of that rake that will be moved when the weather turns, he certainly doesn't have anything else, and was quite tired of seeing himself on TV, hearing himself on TV on Tuesdays.
Well.
I'm just passing it along.
That's prerogative to keep discussing it with him, so, okay. So, that takes care of D and E.
We were just trying to tie up loose ends, is all.
I can assure you, I tried to explain that, but people watch it, they make their own judgment, so.
Yep, yep, so, hopefully that'll, you know, I mean, I just assume not having to run back and forth, but.
We do.
If we've got everything, we've got everything, so. Okay, purchase order, oh.
I'm sorry, he was just gonna say, he does have a couple of those heat gauges that you guys were talking about, but he says that he bought them with his own money, so they're not town property.
Oh, well, I mean, they're not expensive, it's not an expensive piece of equipment, so, okay. Purchase orders.
So, the next two kinda go together as well, purchasing orders and time sheets. I have under new business a Road Commissioner Workshop, because I thought that that was the direction the Board wanted to go in. I talked to the Treasurer, and our Trio Software certainly has a very easy way to encumber and create purchase orders, so it's just gonna be a matter of you deciding how much money you wanna put on that, and we can create a policy for you to review. The time sheets, I know that Elise has been going back and forth with Michelle as well, and we're real close to having an updated one that gets all of the information on there that everybody wants, so those should be coming up soon.
Okay.
But I think, what I understood you saying was that you wanted to review them with the Road Commissioners before.
Right.
We accepted anything, so.
Yep.
We'll talk about that under new business.
Okay. Inspection policy?
So, based on the conversation last week, what I drafted was Town of Acton Inspection Policy. If the Town of Acton Elementary School is closed due to inclement weather and the Town Hall remains open, there will be no code enforcement inspections on that day. The Board of Selectmen reserves the right to allow the Town Administrator, in conjunction with Code Enforcement Office, to make this decision on other weather-related days, in such cases as early release or vacations, when he or she feels it's in the best safety interest of the town employee traveling. Essentially, we put that piece in because they do have half-days or vacations, that department's having a lot of trouble traveling down certain roads and not being cleared or safe for them to travel, so that was their request in the policy.
Okay. Okay, so you've heard the policy?
Mm-hmm.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the Town of Acton Inspection Policy.
No, second that.
Moved and seconded, adopt the policy. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed?
We got one back in from Calderwood, so depending on what the Road Committee Chair would like, can make copies of it and, or send it to you electronically, also allow the Board to look at it, but we did get one in. Deadlines come and gone, so I'm not sure if you're planning on having another meeting, but I'll get that scanned over to you this week. It's for the engineering report on Rowbridge, Rowbridge.
Just to emphasize, I don't remember what the amount of it is, but from a looking standpoint, I don't know whether there's any money to move forward, what you're.
Well, we had the article for $20,000.
Anything else on the bridge?
No, we'll get that over and see what direction you guys wanna go in.
Okay. New business, Jeff Donahue.
Mr. Donahue came into my office a couple of times and had some concerns that he wanted to speak to the Board about, but I do not see him present this evening. He did request to be put on the agenda, but not sure what happened.
Okay. Rec Field.
The Rec Field is, remember, they've, they've decided to go with this ice skating rink this year?
Yes.
So, they're looking for plowing. They need the parking lot plowed, so that people can go in, and now, our other town properties that are on our side, the Road Commissioner just kinda picks up and does it as part of the, I'm guessing that's gonna be District Two sign?
District One.
Oh, that's, that's District One, okay. So, may I ask him if he can pick that up?
Of course.
Yep.
Yep.
I'm assuming that once that gate is open, for the winter, it's gonna stay open?
I would imagine. I mean, they didn't really, they haven't set, you know, specific hours or times or anything, they do need to get it plowed out, just to get in there and get it set up, so we can work something out and certainly make sure that, you know, it's open and ready for him pre-storms.
I think it would be easier to have it, once it's open, stay open.
Yeah.
Right. The biggest thing is getting it plowed first, so they can get it in there, but I'll make sure and mention that.
You want me to speak on that, Jen, what they decided last night?
Sure, if they spoke about it after I left.
What they decided was whoever plowed it, whether it was Scott or the other Road Commissioner, they would keep the gate locked for liability purposes and give them a key.
Yeah, I don't know if that's gonna.
I just don't see if you, once you get a snowbank plowed up in there, that gate's.
And to ask them to get out and.
That's something the Selectmen can decide, I mean, this is what they said last night.
What they would like.
And they give them a key, and what they're talking about, so that it doesn't interfere with the normal road plowing and whatever, that they were gonna have ice skating for three or four hours one day on the weekend, I think it was Sunday, but it might've been Saturday, 12 to 3, or something like that, so that, you know, there'd be plenty of time and if it does snow, for whoever does it to go in and do it, and just get it ready for that weekend.
So, the skating rink's not gonna just be open for when you wanna go?
I guess if you wanna walk in and use it, but the wreck itself is planning on a program.
Well, they're gonna have events with, you know.
Right, three hours, three hours a day on the weekend and stuff, that's there.
Those are decisions the Board's gonna have to make, you know, with them.
Yeah, but this is what they talked about last night afterwards, so.
I mean, people park their car and go in and use the facilities when the gates close, so.
They use the basketball court, and they use the, I'm not saying they're gonna say, they're not saying no, it's just they didn't, they were more concerned about what the kids, what they're gonna do with the kids, that was all. And to make sure that there was no, like, gee, she could have this plowed Monday morning at 3:00, because somebody might go in there, you know, so, a little more legitimacy with it.
Let me talk to Scott, and I'll touch base with Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Okay, Road Commissioner Workshop.
So, to go over all of these new things that you're talking about, how about a Thursday at 4:00? Could we do an hour workshop with the Road Commissioners before a Selectman's Meeting?
Thursday?
All right, Tuesday.
Okay. Tuesday at 4:00.
11th, 18th, I think I'm busy the 25th.
Soon as I get home.
Okay, 11th, next week at 4:00.
Sure.
Good for you ladies?
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
So, it'll be open to the public, like all workshops, but just the five of you will?
Yep. Yep, sounds good. Okay.
Joan's in to go over my little Christmas things, it's just so exciting, so, because people like Lois call me all the time and wanna know how my tree's going. So, this is our second year through our Neighbors Helping Neighbors, doing our little Christmas tree. What we've done, if you're not familiar, is we reach out to, we personally reach out to people or families in town that we, that we understand that something has gone on in their life this last year, and they might need a little extra help. These aren't things that people can apply for, these are kids that have never been helped through our program before, they're not on Toys for Tot, we do double checks, we do all of that. So, we have 11 kids this year, 11 kids, yeah, that's a little more than, than we've taken in in the past, but we have a very healthy Neighbors Helping Neighbors account, and we have lots of people that wanna take items. So, outside of my window, you will see a variety of little presents like this, and they're gonna say something on them, like, size 6'7" outfit girls. So, we have it, so that all 11 kids are gonna get two outfits, a pair of slippers, and I think it's three toys each. So, we've got them all separated. So, what we do is take one, make sure that you leave your name and number, so that we know where it go, where, who has that number, and then bring it back to us wrapped, and we will have somebody deliver them before Christmas, so. Those are our little gifts, so feel free to take from the pile. What was the other thing we wanted to mention? We are open tomorrow, we've gotten a lot of calls today, the day of mourning that was set by the President, federal, I know that Governor LaPage did something at the state level, but it doesn't affect municipalities, so we, we are open. I think there were two towns in Maine that were closing, but everybody else was open.
No mail, no mail delivery tomorrow.
Staff, no mail delivery?
No mail.
Does that mean the banks are closed?
Probably, they're usually.
Banks are open?
Okay.
They usually, they usually close federal holiday, with the, well, federal.
Federal day of mourning.
Quest to mourn.
Yep.
The staff Christmas tree, staff Christmas party was the other thing.
Yes.
So, we will close at 1:00, the transfer station and the Town Hall on Wednesday, December 19th, so that the Town Hall staff and transfer station can have a small Christmas celebration with an appropriate Yankee swap gift. Ed.
However it works, I don't care. That's an inside joke kinda sorta, so, yes. Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, I don't have a flyer done yet, but I just get, got confirmation that the Alzheimer's Association will do a presentation here at 1:00 on Tuesday, December 18th at 1:00, and the snow date will be on Wednesday at 1:00.
Okay.
Ooh, can't snow, that's our Christmas party day.
Oh, oh.
That's all right, we'll invite them in, it'll be fun.
It's not gonna snow.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was bad.
Yep. Public comment? Anyone from the public cabinet this time?
Get my timer going, Dennis. We've got three minutes.
Don't forget to deduct the time the Selectmen are answering my questions.
I will, I try to do that, all right.
First off, Friday afternoon, there was a car parked inside the town sand shed getting sand.
Whoa.
Okay? This is an ongoing problem, it has been for a long time, that's why the town spent the money to put that gate up, to keep cars from going in there, and that's why they put the building outside for the sand, okay? It's a, and this is my opinion, I'm just gonna tell you this, that I, I believe that it's a Selectman's responsibility to make sure that that place is safe from the public, and not the Road Commissioners. The Road Commissioners are in charge of the roads, that's just a piece of town property, just like this here, the fire department station, the ambulance, the rec field, the school, it's a Selectman's responsibility to make sure that gets done. How you do it, it's up to you, but there was a car inside the building Friday afternoon when I drove by there.
And Elise did ask me to put that on your list of things for the workshop, so you guys can come up with a plan together, so they're gonna discuss it.
Yep.
Um, the other thing is, I assume that the town sander that's down there is gonna be used by the District Two Road Commissioner.
I don't think at this point.
Yes, there is.
There is down there, but he's not gonna be using it, I don't believe.
That he's gonna use it?
Yes.
It is down there, but.
It is down there.
He hasn't determined if he's gonna use it.
Yeah, he's got two sanders on the two trucks he has.
As a taxpayer, why would we pay for somebody's sander when the town owns one? That doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, one's bolted down to the chassis of the truck, and the other one is a all-season body.
Right, so you can unbolt it and put ours on there, it just doesn't make any sense to pay so much money per hour when we own, when we bought and we maintain that ourselves.
The other District Road Commissioner, need to use it?
I was gonna say.
Why not the other? Yeah, why not the other?
The other one does use the town sander.
But I wonder if he, that's what I was gonna say, if, you know, maybe he needs another one.
We'll discuss it at our meeting with the.
Yeah, the other side could use it.
Yeah.
I've seen a truck with no sander.
So, maybe.
He came plowed, and then somebody else came and sanded.
So, maybe he could use it.
Like I said, you know, it doesn't make any sense to me.
I'll put it on our list.
And the other thing is, me asking questions or whatever about town equipment, as a citizen and a taxpayer, I will keep asking until I get all my answers.
I hope you will.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I never knew anything about that, that grader, that.
York grader.
Rake we had. Never even knew the town had one, so. I appreciate you bringing that forward, so.
And remember, I'm only passing along.
Is my timer up?
No, you got four seconds.
No, keep going.
Oh, time.
I was also, I was also told, Warren Finance Committee members have always been liaisons to different departments, to find out how the departments work, why they ask for, what they ask for. We've been doing this for years and years and years. And I was told by the chairman, two weeks ago, I think, that we weren't, liaisons weren't supposed to go to the fire meetings. Is this that monthly meeting? What's the status? Is that accurate? If so, why?
We asked our attorney, I think you have the information on that.
The fire chief feels, the fire chief feels like there's information discussed at those meetings that the public shouldn't be able to be privy to. Main municipals indicated to the board that if they were workshops or staff meetings, that the public didn't have to go, and he says that that's what they are. So according to the legal team, they do not have to allow the public to be there. He is willing to meet with anybody one-on-one, and go over budgets, and go over information, but he is, he just says that there's, you know, that they have to review runs and calls, and even though they're not naming names, that he, he believes that there are particulars that shouldn't be open to the public, so.
I, I appreciate that, but those meetings were always different than the monthly meetings. That being said, politically, I think it's a mistake.
Thank you.
Lois Smith, who's taxpayer now. Hey, down by my house, you've got one of those speed reader meters. I would suggest y'all get it out of there before we start weaning back the snow.
Yep, it's scheduled to be moved on Thursday.
Or we're going to have issues, because we need, we need no meter, we have one left field somewhere, because it's too close to the road. The other thing, I'll clarify with what Dennis was, the person that went, we, I was one of the persons that went to the meeting, as far as the fire department went. It was a beautiful meeting. It only lasted 10 or 15 minutes. It was nice. He explained to us, he whatever. You know, in our opinion, or my opinion, I won't even go that far, in my opinion, I've talked to others. They do their public part first, like you guys do, you do your public, but if there's something private that needs to be, needs to be talked about, they ask you if you would kindly leave, because now it becomes private. And I see no problem with this, because if I found out, heck, the truck should be ready, the new one that they just got. I found out more about that than I, than I've heard in months. And me being a former firefighter, this really bugs me. Because we've never, we've never closed it off to public. We've always allowed public in. Even if it's just what I just said, in for 10 or 15 minutes, and have to be out for the last half an hour. It's better than nothing. It gives us what we're looking for, which is, where are you spending our money, and why? Or where did you spend it? Like, knowing who the truck was was most important for me, because I was one of the opponents against it, for my own reasons, for a taxpayer. This is important. It's not nothing that, you know, to me, you're hiding something when you want to, when you don't want to do something like this. I'm sorry. As a taxpayer, it's very important, it should be, you should open up, even if it's half a meeting and half a meeting, or. Maybe that's something he could do, maybe that's something I could talk to him about.
The night of that meeting, he called over here, and it was a, it was a Monday night.
It was Monday.
We were here.
And we were here for something.
We were here doing interviews for the road commissioners.
That's right. Okay, I was going to say, we were here for something, and we took the call, and put, we put him on speakerphone, and I flat-out said, "It's a meeting, you have to allow him in."
They changed the name of the meeting now to a staff meeting.
So with that, you know, so from this side, we said, you know, it's got to be open to the public, okay? And that's what we told him. So next, you know, he wanted a legal opinion, we get a legal opinion.
Right, and that's what we approached, that was what we approached him. But this is, other fire departments do this. Now, I, I talk to other people, I'm still friends with different ones on different fire departments, they do this. They do their business first, and they want people there. They want people to know what's going on. They do their business part first, and they kindly ask you. You know, do, would you mind leaving, because now it's private, or because they got personal stuff, please, please move on, you know, a lot of people have no problem with it.
I just kind of feel as though we're getting thrown under the bus, we're not the ones that told him no. We initially said yes.
Oh, I'm not saying it's you guys, I'm just saying in general.
I just want to make sure that's clear.
So I'll have a fire, I'll have a conversation with the fire chief.
To me, that'd be the best way.
And it makes perfectly good sense to have, like you say. Have a public meeting first.
Yeah, the first 15, 20 minutes.
And then turn the rest of it into a staff meeting.
I'm sure the other stuff is like HIPAA, you know, things that you, you know.
There's a lot of HIPAA things that are discussed there.
And we're not asking to be there to know who went on a 911 call, for who they picked up, whatever X, Y, and Z. We're looking at what you're doing financially with our money.
Yep.
As a town, and a taxpayer. We're not, in that 10 to 15 minutes, like I said, I learned. I learned where the truck was, I learned the status, I learned what was going on. And that's what bugs me, is that then the following day, he called, this happened, and I understand legal, and I get all that, but it really bothers me, because other departments don't do that. Other departments, I want you there.
Right.
And I think there's a way to work this out, to make everybody happy.
Give us a chance to handle it.
Yep.
But I appreciate, yeah, I just wanted to let you guys know, I just didn't want to see that thing in the ditch. Thank you.
And the board supports it being open to the public, I mean, before I call the department head, because, I mean, you can, you know, and I don't want to get into this too much on, on camera, but you can certainly tell him that they will be open to the public.
Right.
Just like you tell the rest of us.
If he holds a meeting that's.
I think it's a great idea to do half and half.
Do his recap, of what's going on, and then if you've got anything else, then please step out.
Yep, yep.
Hi, I know it was mentioned briefly before, and about televising, showing the meetings that have been televised, and with the special town meeting, it's been more than two weeks, and it, it just seemed unusual, because that's not what normally happens, and if there was a problem, or a specific reason, or something.
Yeah, no, it definitely should be on there. I'm going on to his page now. If it's not, I mean, I'm not going to, I don't check every meeting afterwards.
Sure.
I assume that they go on there, so unless I hear that a meeting's not on there.
No, it's not.
I am, Board of Selectmen, I will look right now and send him a message before I leave the building tonight, if it's not on there.
Okay, thank you.
But it is three days, and the board will remind him of that in an email.
And we have on numerous occasions, so. Okay. Anyone else in the public?
Quiet, David.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just going to, you know, make a small request. The next time I, as the Chair of the Warren Finance Committee, have a meeting, can I please have a key? I hate sitting out in the parking lot.
Could you come in and get one?
I'd be happy to come in and get one, but I was told that the person that was going to record the meeting was going to be here. No one showed up to record the meeting, and I contacted Jennifer, and she very quickly solved the problem by having us have our meeting over at the fire department. They were very gracious, they had no problems. But, you know, when you've got six people sitting out in the parking lot, for a meeting that's supposed to start at 5:00, and there's nobody here to open the door, you know, I mean.
We will get you a key, and that, the board is aware of that. That was the meeting that we had, the, when the website was down, and we sent it to the IT guy to post the meeting. He posted it, Mr. Corey took it as a different date. It was a miscommunication, but we will certainly get you and Lois a key by the end of the week, so don't ask me again until at least Friday.
And I appreciate your assistance, and I hated, liked the devil, calling you.
How did you get my number after hours?
I'm sorry?
How did you get my number after hours? Call them.
Anyone else in the public?
It's on Ed's answering machine, nice.
That I've seen.
Ed, Ed's just called Jennifer.
I have said that in the past, actually, but I can't remember who.
I do appreciate the rapid response, Jennifer.
Anything else?
No.
Anything else?
I'm all set.
Someone from the public? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Oh, we got a ZBA meeting